We're going to call the meeting to order. And we will start with our educational showcase, which tonight is the presentation of our annual audit. Welcome, Andrew Patrick from Westing Company.
Good, I'm Jen and everybody. You guys all have in front of you the draft of the financial statements, as well as the draft management letter for the audit. I guess I'll start off by saying, as it has in the past, the audit went very well. We came in October and did the bulk of the audit over with Chastity and her group. We had to wait in order to finalize because New York State was not real released the New York State TRS Gatsby 68 memo until the late December, early January timeframe. So that will always delay the audit each year. And then the culmination of the audit is the draft audit report that is in front of you. I'm going to go over some of the highlights. I'm not going to go over all 52 pages. But if there's questions at all, please let me know. Please stop me. I'm more than happy to take any questions you may have. So you go through. So this year, there were no new accounting standards that were required to be adopted by the college. There was one v. one in regards to long-term software subscriptions, but the colleges were either short-term, they were cancelable, or they were not material to the audit. So the college did not have to adopt it. So we did not have any new footnotes. Nothing new this year in the financials, other than the activity that happened during the year. So the first part of the audit is on pages one through three, which is our independent audits report. So as I said in the past, the financial statements are those of management. We at Westing Company attach our opinions to the financials. So this is our first of the opinions. And right in the beginning, it says we've audited the financial statements of the college. And in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly. So that's a clean, unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we give as a profession and what the college has received in the past. The opinion further goes on to talk about what management's responsibilities are and what my responsibility as your auditor is, and then discuss some of the supplementary information in the report. Out of the opinion, we have management's discussion and analysis. That's pages four through 10. What this does is it gives some more description to what happened during the year. It allows some narrative to what happened when the numbers comparative from this year to last year. So when you look at the actual financial statements themselves, you'll still see they're presented in a single-year format, whereas the management's discussion analysis provides summarized, but yet comparative, information. So I'll just start off. The first bullet does say that the college is in that position. If you take out some long-term liabilities, which I'm going to talk about in a couple of minutes, it's around $6.2 million. Six million of that, page four, the first bullet. So six million of that is unreserved, and then the remaining is the encumbrances. So then if you go further into the management's discussion analysis onto page nine, I'm going to skip a bunch of the pages, but I'll go to page nine. The other part that the management's discussion analysis does is this separates out just your operating budget, and it shows your results to, from your operating results to your budget. The rest of the financials will take into effect your capital stuff, your restricted funds, your operating funds, and combines them all together. So there's nowhere in the financial, you can just see your operating budget and the results to that, where this management's discussion analysis shows that. So you can see that our revenues were a little bit under budget. Our expenses were under budget. And then just for the operating, we were able to add it about $58,000 of surplus. And then if you take into our conferences, of the 252 is a decrease of about $193,000. But again, this is just our operating budget, and this is the budget that you guys look at.
Yes, does this mean that we allocated fund balance for the 2023 budget, but we didn't need to use any of it?
I believe, yes. I just want to, I want to look at Chastity before I say something. I want to make sure that's, yes. So then after management's discussion analysis, on page 11 starts the financial statements. So when you look at the financial statements, if you've seen them in the past, they are set up where the first column is primary institution with just the college. But then we have the two component units, which is the foundation and the FCA, to come up with a total reporting unit. So you'll see the next couple of statements will have all those four columns in there. I'm going to focus right now just on the primary institution and just talk about a couple of highlights on the other two. So our total assets were about $31.4 million. If you take a look at our current assets up top, that they're not sub totaled, but overall compared to last year, it's about $1.2 million higher than last year. So our cash is up a little bit, about $1 million. And our due for other governments is up about $300,000. And that's related to our capital projects, our monies not yet received. Our liabilities in total, up $10.3 million. Our current liabilities are up about $1.4 million over last year. We had some increases in accounts payable and an increase in deferred tuition. The long-term assets and the long-term liabilities, those are comprised of things that are, some of them are not within the control of the college. So if you look in the long-term liabilities and you see a net pension liability of $2.2 million and a total liability of $4.6 million. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the board that sets the accounting standards for all governments in the, in the country. They have set forth two different accounting pronouns in the past years relating to your post-employment benefits. That's your health and dental that you are promising to your current employees and retirees out into the future. That gets valued by an actuary each year. That's dependent upon your contracts, but it's also dependent on things like healthcare cost trend rates, inflation, things like that. All those numbers go into the calculation that your actuary does to come up with a long-term liability. That long-term liability is $4.6 million. You're not required to fund that liability over time. You either pay as you go each year in your operating budget. You pay for those, those premiums for those healthcare expenses. So, but that is a long-term liability that's on there. The other liability above it is the pension. So the pension systems for the states, both ERS and TRS, have to be valued as a system for, for the whole state. So each of those get valued, they have their own auditors, their own actuaries, their own people that look at these numbers. This year, both TRS and ERS were found to be underfunded. So they were less than 100% funded. So when that happens, the college gets their proportionate share of that liability to put on the financial statements. You don't have to pay this liability. They're not asking you to check for any of these numbers. This is just the long-term liability because of the system, the pension systems as a whole are underfunded. That varies year to year. Sometimes they're overfunded, sometimes they're underfunded. A lot of it has to do with the stock market and how well their investments are doing. So those long-term liabilities, while they're required to be on the financial statements, they don't really reflect the actual operations of the college. And then the other, the long-term asset that you have is your capital assets, which is your buildings and your equipment, things like that, that we do take, take the expense over time. We depreciate that over time. So overall, our, our total fund equity for the college is $16.6 million. The second column is the foundation. The most of the foundation is made up of their investments. Their assets are about $6.5 million, of that $5.9 is investments. And then the FCA, the biggest change this year is the selling of the campus view apartments and the forgiveness of the USDA loans. So if you look at this financial statement for last year, you'll see that we had a large loan on the books for the USDA. We had a lot more assets for the campus view. But by taking those off the books, and we'll see that on the next page, our net position for FCA is about $846 million. And so the next page is your statement of activities. So this, for the same organization, shows the revenues and the expenses for each. You'll see that for the college, our total operating revenues were $7.3 million. That's about $1.5 million higher than last year, mostly made up of an increase in our state and local grants. Our expenses, about operating expenses, about $20.4 million. Only $700,000 of that increase, because we had about a $2 million increase over last year, was relating to operating. A lot of the increases were the pension things, the things that are without our control. So if you look at that expense and you look at it compared to last year and see a $2 million increase, it wasn't that the college spent $2 million more. Some of those accounting entries to put those long-term liabilities on the books increased the expenses. And then our total non-operating revenues expenses, $11.3 million. That's down over last year, but that's really due to those federal aids going away, the hard funding and underfunding. So our overall change in our fund balance was a decrease of about $1.1 million. But again, not all of that is due to our operations and what we spent and what we took in. A lot of, some of that has to do with those long-term accounting entries. The foundation had a positive increase in their, in their, their fund balance or the net position of $300,000. And then you'll see that we had a net deficit of $3 million in FCA last year, ending with a positive $846, and that's removing those, the debt associated with it. Then after that, we have the statement of cash flows for the next two pages, and then page 15 starts our footnote. So the footnotes, really, like I said, because we didn't have any new accounting changes, did change. They're really the same setup, the same format as last year. They give more description to some of the numbers, specifically those long-term numbers in the financial statements. And the footnotes have information for not only just the college, but it has footnote information for the foundation as well as FCA. So footnote one goes on for a whole bunch of pages. It talks about accounting policies of the college, the, the foundation and the FCA, but also has a whole bunch of pages in relation to that pension systems for the state, the TRS and the ERS. So that really makes the financial statements longer than they had been in the past. And again, it's information that's necessary to the financials, but not really affecting the operations of the college. So I'm going to skip through all of those and go to page 24 in the footnotes. Page 24, the bottom footnote two is your cash. Just wanted to point out that your cash at the college, it has gone up, it's $8.6 million, but all of that is fully collateralized. It's fully insured. You do, you do collateralize those funds over the FDIC limits, so. Then after that, the next page, we talk about the restricted cash. There is no restricted cash at the college. FCA used to have more restricted funds relating to the USDA loan. But again, since that was forgiven, those, those funds are also not, not restricted anymore. And then you'll just see the bottom, I just want to point out, and the footnote four is relation to the foundation. So this is where we're seeing some of the, the footnotes mixing between the college and the foundation. And that's yet. Page 27, I mentioned that one long-term asset of your capital assets, which is your buildings and equipment of $18.1 million. This is that breakdown. It shows you what new additions were there this year. We had no retirements. So $52.9 million of cost. We're depreciating that over time to get to your value of $18.1. And then the next page has those fixed assets for the FCA and where those stand, and you'll see the large decrease in the building for them. And then we have more description on FCA on the next page, further explaining those transactions, because it looks like you could get to that organization right there. And then just to point out, pages 32 through 35 are also more descriptive. I mentioned the post-employment benefit liability, which is your health essential that you have your accessory value. This is a whole bunch of footnote pages for that liability as well. And like I said, some of it is in your control, where it's your, your contracts and things like that. But some of it is without your control. Your health's across trend rates, things like that can affect that liability. So if you go to page 34, the second half has a sensitivity analysis. And two of the assumptions that the college doesn't have control over shows if they were to change 1%, one way or the other, how much that liability can change. And then the changing of that liability affects your net position. Again, affecting your net position in a way that's not then how you are operating day to day. Then after all these footnotes, we have some supplemental information that starts on page 37 and goes through page 42. These schedules are either required to be in there from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board or through State Education Department. SUNY requires a couple of different schedules. So these are all schedules that are required to be in the financial statements. They're audited by Westing Company, prepared by the business office, and are included in the financial statements. Then after we get through all those schedules, the second part of the audit starts on page 45. So we have the first opinion on the financials, and all that stuff I just went over was reflected in that opinion. Now we have our second, which is our report on internal controls over the union for reporting and compliance. So we're not an internal, we're not looking at every single control that the college has and testing every single transaction. But we do have to assess your internal controls over financial reporting, when we're doing our audit, when we're doing our risk assessment, and making sure that we feel that the controls are operating effectively. Here, we have no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses. The, the college, the business office has excellent controls in place. We're not here proposing any audit adjustments. Things are, the trial balance that we receive is really what's culminated into this financial statement. So the books and records are in great shape, and we have no findings or no comments on that stuff. Then we have our last opinion on page 47. So because the college spends more than $750,000 of federal money, we have to also do a compliance audit over your federal grants. We've been having to do this ever since we became your auditors, your prior auditors did. Mostly it's been around your student financial aid, which is what we did test this year. But in the past couple of years, we had specific to the, the herd funds and the extra funding that was received with COVID funding. So that was higher in the past, it's gone down as you spend it. But here, this year, we had no findings. Last year, if you remember, in the report, we had a finding regarding the posting of the reports onto the website timely. We double-checked that for this year, even though we didn't audit that specific program. Everything was done on time and timely. So that finding's been corrected. And for the student financial aid that we specifically tested, we had no findings, so it's a no. And then those federal programs and those federal expenditures are all detailed out on page 50. So you have about $5.7 million of federal awards, federal expenditures, and we tested specifically the $3.1 million of your student financial aid cluster. And when we're looking at those, we're not just looking at the dollar amounts are correct. We're making sure that the students that are receiving the funds are eligible to receive the funds. We're making sure that the student withdrew during a certain timeframe that the funds were returned. So there's different compliance aspects that we have to look at with this, with this audit specifically versus just the back. And then the very last page of the audit, page 52, is a summary of everything I just went over. So if I were a board member, this is the page that kind of would tell me what happened during the year. All unmodified opinions, no findings. The finding that we had last year was corrected. The only thing I want to point out is just above line B, one line above, where it says audit E, audit T qualified as low risk. We do still have to say no because you had a finding in the past. So once we get to two years without a finding, then you become back, go back to low risk. And all that means when you're not low risk is that we have to test 40% of those federal monies versus 20%. It doesn't mean anything else to the organization. It just really means what we as auditors have to test will change. But overall, a very good, very clean audit. And you'll also see in regards to the time of audit, so well, the other little couple of pages that I have review of your management letter. Last year, we had a management letter, again, regarding the reporting of those, of those stage stabilization bonds. That was corrected, and we had no new comments or reports in the board. So everything's very clean audit, like I mentioned, so no issues here. And that was a quick overview of a lot of pages. So if anybody wants me to go over anything specific or the audit process itself, please let me know.
Thank you to the business office, who are doing such a good job and putting, cooperating as well as you do with us.
A lot of work in this document, it seems like.
Impressed that they were able to get the campus view off the records as quick as they do. Then sure that it's no small effort. Take a motion. Go in the executive session. Discuss the audit.
That is public data, so.
Run with the auditor.
Right, but anything that they're doing, we can discuss publicly. It's public information. So we've got to have a reason that's going to survive the public officers law to let us go into this.
Thanks, throw the motion.
You can ask any question about that.
Done motion.
Any other questions or comments in relation to the audit?
So we will finalize these documents, give them out to Chastity. They will also be filed with the federal government for the single audit. That will be certified by both Chastity and myself, and then we'll get everything finalized and sent.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. We publish our usual comments. You're none?
I don't need to report here, so who wants the president's report?
Just, just briefly, over the last couple of weeks, I've had meetings with, I've attended both counties, attended both counties' full board meeting. Had the opportunity to talk about the college, talk about the relationship of the counties to the college. They have an unprecedented number of new supervisors at both counties. We wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to talk about the college. We have invited them to come to campus in April. We haven't set a date yet, but it's not just the new supervisors, all the supervisors. They have to move to C campus and for those who haven't had the chance. We also, both counties, we submitted resolutions in support of community college funding. And Golden County has had a full board meeting, did approve that resolution on Tuesday. I'm at the Montgomery County Committee meetings, and they are moving that to their full board meeting next Tuesday. So I anticipate that they will approve that resolution, at least indicating their support for additional state funding for community colleges. On that subject of the state budget, the one hospitals were released. I sent those around to you to take a look at. Really nothing significant for class or community colleges. There's some addition, there's, there's some opportunities for additional funding for both the Assembly and the Senate, but it wasn't specifically directed to community colleges. And there's a lot of negotiations ahead of them. So whether or not any of that funding persists. So what that, what that means, and for our planning purposes, we'll be looking at essentially flat funding when it comes to state aid, which certainly isn't great news in the sense of our expenses continually rise and revenue strength in state will remain level. And that will cause us to look for additional sources of revenue, one of those other opportunities that we have, which are the counties and, and students. At your place, you'll see that we have the, probably stealing two or three or fourteen under on this, but, but we will be having an event, which you are all cordially invited on Tuesday. With U Albany, they're bringing a bus. And there'll be a lot of hoopla associated with a new partnership agreement, a new dual admission agreement that we're having with them. We're also unveiling our U Albany multipurpose room. They, they intend to conduct several activities on our campus, including dedicated advising, financial aid. And at some point, they're looking to do some, some courses there as well. So we'll get a chance if you're able and interested, there'll be a chance to see that space. Some women, Santa Barbara will be there, some of the smaller, Pat Mayne, along with Cast of Thousands apparently will be here. So again, you're all welcome to attend that event. The Albany bus rolls in around 9:00 o'clock, and we'll have a precedent, a hell of a lesson. I move over to, to Wilkerson Hall to look at that space. Also want to just publicly acknowledge the success and again apologies to student embarrassed of our men's basketball team, who recently were at the, the national tournament, lost their first round game, but, but won the consolation round, game down three starters. So, and it should note that they lost in overtime in the first round to a team that went very deep last year. So we're very proud of the men and the folks that they had for our second consecutive trip to the national tournament. And I will conclude there and ask if there are questions about these items or anything else that's assigned.
Thank you. We're going to jump back on the agenda, but for just a moment, I realize that I didn't ask you all to confirm that you received and reviewed the minutes from the February meeting that are in your packet. And if there are no objections, I would ask for a sponsor to approve them. Trusty Beck, can I be second trusted, parent? Any discussion, changes, corrections? All in favor?
All in.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? We will move on to the college assembly report. If you look up at the screen, see how much it's there and soon give us an update.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Okay, good. Thanks for having me here. It's my first time doing this, so if I engage in any redundancy, I'm sorry. So on our last meeting, which was February 22nd, as for the executive committee, what we've been working on is revising the assessment plan for the Assembly in light of changes to the institutional learning outcome changes, and also to changes in relation to the strategic plan. That's ongoing. But one of the things we're asking committees to do, standing committees for the Assembly, is to come up with a six-year plan where they assess all of their charges twice in that six-year period. So, which is a change from what it had been, where we had just been, the Assembly in general, or these executive committees, been sending them questions to ask in relation to a larger shared governance charge, which didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So that's the change we're making, and we're asking the committees to submit a six-year plan that we can look at, and they can start assessing the charges they feel deem appropriate in the order they wish to start executing that plan moving forward. I'm going to skip over the administrative and SSA reports, because you, I presume, get that here as well. All those representatives are here, so that wouldn't seem to make sense unless somebody felt like I need to. But if not, I'll just move on to the standing and ad hoc committee reports. The assessment committee, they discussed, the plan assessed ILO number one for the 2024, 2025 academic year. And that's a new revised institutional learning outcome. So they're going to start getting that in place. And it was mentioned from the Middle States Ad Hoc Committee that the campus purchased the Weave software to use for the accreditation process. It might even be used for more general assessment purposes moving forward. It sounds like it's a really good program, so hopefully that'll help our assessment process. Also, there has been a change to the assessment cycle for curriculum in general for, for divisions and, and departments, where the six-year cycle, during this time, instead of having to offer an assessment every year, the assessment can happen every two years and three times in a six-year assessment cycle, which seems to be more manageable to avoid redundancy and to produce more streamlined and hopefully more fruitful assessments moving forward. There was a program revision to the AAS nursing program, which basically what they had to do was add MAT 125 statistics to meet SUNY janitor requirements. So two things, one is that they're changing SOC 101 to a DEISJ elective, which there's a whole host of courses you could probably see on your agenda there that, that students can select from. And the, the department's also going to have to request a two-year, a two-credit waiver and remove physical education from the program in order to meet this. So they're currently at 44 credits and they would be at, excuse me, 64, 64 credits, and they would be at 66. So hopefully that, you know, that won't be held up moving forward. I don't think anybody foresees any problems with that, but you never know. And the other thing that came from curriculum was two micro credentials that actually John Van Bladel had proposed. One is compassionate communication action, micro credential. The other was multiculturalism and diversity. And they were both approved, as were the nursing program ones as well, I should mention. Institutional advancement, just thanked everybody for the participation. Founder's Day, everybody felt like it was a big success. So good for them and that committee and those who put that together. And ad hoc Middle States Steering Committee also noted that all seven standards, those subcommittees had provided their outlines in time by Valentine's Day, ironically or not. And they expect that the name of the team chair from Middle States, who will visit in the fall of 2024, will be named relatively soon. Unless you've heard otherwise, you already know who that is. So we'll be waiting to hear who that is and of course who the team will be. And so the next draft, which we're in, next step of the process that everybody's engaged in now, is actually drafting the chapters for the self-study and to share that by the end of the semester. And that's what we're all working on. Safety, just noted they repaired handicap doors in O'Connell Hall. And a part-time public safety officer has been hired for evenings and weekends. And for student life, it was noted that Joan Gander and Isabella Nicole were the first students received honors as student, in the student spotlight, put on by student life. And that's selected by Student Affairs. And each division is going to be asked for nominations moving forward toward those, toward that honor and the nominations toward that. And the only other thing to mention from the Assembly meeting was Floris, I don't want to, I'm going to say Flor, because I always mess up her last name, and I know it's like I have a difficult last name. Noted that, yeah, PTK induction was going to be on the 14th at 6:30, and 140 students had been invited. And I, I, I know, I didn't get a chance to go, but I presume it went well. And Dr. Britton had noted that the schedule for summer and fall 2024 uh, Dr. Britton had noted that the schedule for summer and fall twenty twenty-four would be available soon. Actually, it was available this past Monday uh, when students could start registering. So um, that's all I have. I don't know if anybody had any questions for me or if there's anything I missed or should have gotten to during that um, short presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Sure, thank you.
So we'll move on to the foundation report with, oh, I'm sorry, student trustee report, student trustee garden. I don't have anything for you. Thank you. We want to foundation with trustee, I think.
Living and the Perea Gallery and that directed by Brian May. And um, he will host the thirty-eighth annual uh, FSC secure uh, regional high school uh, order exhibition. On Monday, every started on Monday, April eight through April eighteen. And um, the awards ceremony is gonna take place the very last day from six until seven thirty. And uh, this year, uh, we have a juror, uh, Alexander is a local uh, artist. Alexandra Higgins, if you remember last month, uh, he, she had her art. The gallery and it was wonderful. And uh, she's responsible for making the exhibition and award selection. The award is um, five of them is jurors' choice award. Each uh, person they get hundred dollar and there is two award. Uh, for honorable mention, uh, award for fifty dollar. And the last one is a people choice award for fifty dollar. And uh, that is going to take place when people, they come the last night of the uh, of the uh, show and uh, meaning the attendee, they're gonna vote for it. But um, and then uh, uh, Alexandra Higgins, he has a rule and regulation what has to have, which criteria have to, has to have the art. The other um, function is, uh, UCC has a, for his student, they have an art show, uh, each year, uh, they have a art show. This year is Monday, April uh, twenty-ninth until Friday, May tenth. And uh, this is uh, again, uh, Mr. Brian May as to every, if uh, anybody is interested to submit their artwork, they have to check with the director of their gallery and follow their rule and regulation and it has to be to his satisfaction. Uh, the other item is the uh, foundation land. Uh, which hundred fifty-five acres and they, New York land and lakes, are they gonna have it? And uh, but uh, everything is okay with it. Uh, with one um, different issue, it's not a big issue. Instead of uh, sixteen lot, they are going to divide it for fourteen lot. Uh, there is no problem with kind of John Stan or um, uh, hers, but um, town of Amsterdam. Excuse me. Sorry. Town of Amsterdam. Uh, they have a meeting on um, they have a meeting with the group. And uh, you'll be included. There's uh, the foundation um, hosting essential concept for non-for-profit or on Wednesday, uh, every three, March sixth, um, on, on March sixth, they have over more than sixty-five people uh, gathering in Allen House, to be specific, in a treasure room. And uh, it was very well uh, received and then the president was, Vichy Castella. I'm sorry. Fine, my voice doesn't allow me to continue, but I will bear with me. Foundation annual appealing uh, of today, we received fifty thousand dollars and uh, uh, foundation uh, requested that both uh, foundation or the uh, or the trustee as well as or trustee would contribute that. If you didn't, please do and send it to the foundation. You know, this is gonna be allocated for the field and it will be matched. They currently foundation planning fifty-year anniversary soccer alumni for Columbus State weekend. And um, they already have two meeting. The last meeting was March seventh and as we go along, we will let you know uh, what's spoken. And the last night, please, golf tournament. And uh, usually trustee, you're the, we um, sponsored a whole and divide the, divide it between us with exceptional and student trustee and uh, kindly, you know, I think it's two hundred fifty?
Yep, it's um, three, thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Sorry, thirty-one dollars.
Yes. Uh, if you
Can we just round it off to thirty-two?
Oh, yeah, you can give me thirty-five if you like.
You can send it to the foundation if there's no question. I can do my take over.
Thank you. We'll move on to my notes with trustee Beck.
Okay, you all have the reports that were sent to, to us. Um, and they're not quite as thick as the audit, so I won't be going through as quite as much and quite as well as Amy did. It was excellent. On the expense summary for budget versus the actual, if you refer to it for the period of nine, one, twenty-three through two, twenty-nine, twenty-four, it covers fifty percent of our fiscal year. To date, the actual expenses and encompasses are fifty percent of the, of the budget, which is a good thing, I believe, just to give an opinion.
Sounds perfect.
Expense graphs were provided also in your board packet. The first graph provides summary details by major functions such as personnel, fund benefits, equipment and contracted services. The second graph shows expenses and budget data by contracted services category. Both compare data for the current year against the prior year. The third thing to look at is the financial statement and includes revenue and expenses for the period of nine, one, twenty-three through one, thirty-one, twenty-four. Revenue includes billing activity through one, thirty-one, twenty-four and covers the fall of twenty-three, winter of twenty-four, spring of twenty-four semesters. This is ninety-two point seven percent of our tuition budget and expenses are at forty point five percent of the budget. Budget transfers, contracts and grant reports were also provided to, that show the uh, February activity. The two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five
BAFSA.
BAFSA. BAFSA, I'm gonna say the F A F S A process. Um, delays continue. We talked about that last month. The Department of Education has slowly started to release the information. The records that allow a student to be packaged with federal aid is what that information is to the college. Updates from the Department of Education are ongoing and they have indicated that they are working to ramp up the activity. If delays continue, this could impact enrollment as of yet, but it should be just on the radar that it could. Um, I want to thank Chastity for meeting with me the week prior to the trustees meeting. Um, and for providing a lot of the information, but we do for the knowledge of the other trustees, we do go over it and have questions and I do appreciate your time taking to be able to do that. I believe at this point, we have a motion that needs to be handled. Uh, since this is the first time, I'm not sure, but I think I turn it over to Greg to do that.
You do.
I don't. I do it? Okay. Um, uh, uh, background? Should we give the background on it?
Yeah.
Okay. The board of trustees, number one, as you all know, um, all budget transfers between the, approves all budget transfers between the departments that exceed five thousand dollars and on transfers that affect full-time salary accounts. Budget transfers arise primarily from the need to redistribute budget funding to cover expenses. This budget transfer for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four is needed to cover expenses related to retiree payout compensation. Um, the president recommends that the board of trustees approve the two thousand twenty-three budget transfer listed on the attached page, which I believe you have.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion would be that there would be a transfer um, from the fringe benefits department of twelve thousand eight hundred to general institutional transportation. I'm gonna make sure. The other way around. Okay, so transfer the other way around and you have it in. Uh, for the same amount of twelve thousand eight hundred.
Looks like trustee Wilson wants to sponsor that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
And that ends my report.
We just, I don't, yeah.
But the I will read it for you.
I, I don't have it.
Okay, this relates to the audit. So um, background on this, the accounting firm of Weston Company, CPA's PC has completed the college audit for fiscal year ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Board of trustees received a management letter and financial statements for review and discussion. Um, recommendation, president recommends board of trustees accept uh, the FMCC audit report in fiscal year ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
And
I still move.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? And we will move on to trustee Landrio and Billis.
We just have a few items we'd like to make you aware of that are in your written report. Uh, the gym floor is in need of replacement. Our director of facilities, Scott Marshall, is working again, close to redo the gym floor with the new logo as well as updating lines for the different sports. Uh, this has not been completed in some, in some years. Uh, the cyber security lab project, monitor has been installed as well as lines. The IT will be working on installing the computer stations with opening dates to be announced very soon. Uh, last, uh, the SUNY office or new boom has been painted and the carpeting has been installed and is ready for next week's um, open house on March twenty-sixth. That concludes our report. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Preston is unable to join us tonight, so Dr. Britton will update us on
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your packet, there are some uh, notes about engagement among the uh, among the computer uh, faculty and also uh, there are some notes about community engagement of the radiological technology students that are, that's really nice. I guess I just wanted to highlight some things for the business and community partnership side. So our COCal program has uh, actually increased a hundred thirty percent from our last six-year review today, which means that they're uh, supporting nine areas of specialty and we have already active students currently, uh, which is a, a good thing. And uh, I would just note that the transfer fair was held on Monday. Uh, there were thirty, around thirty colleges, universities participating. And we estimate that about two hundred students moved through uh, and or interacted with the transfer fair. So it would be a success. And that concludes my oral report, but I'm happy to respond to questions.
Student affairs and trustee fair.
All right. So in your packet, you signed the full report on student affairs and I'm gonna highlight, um, I'm gonna read some highlights. So the student affairs division uh, invited Jeremy Cortal, uh, counselor and liaison of the Joint Family Counseling Center and FMCC Mental Health uh, Services Office to the March Student Affairs Division meeting uh, to give an overview of students and their needs and that he has been seeing um, that FMCC this semester. In February, Jeremy had fifty-one counseling appointments. Uh, the FMCC Behavioral Intervention Team is collaborating with Jeremy for student referrals and intervention services. Jeremy has also made presentations to various classrooms and support programs on campus. And he is putting in place of support groups for our students. Uh, our spring enrollment is landed at uh, fourteen hundred and eight students. We scored eight, thirty-five FTEs. This is an increase of two point four percent or thirty-three students from last spring. So that's great news. FMCC will host a campus open house on Saturday, April twentieth at nine thirty AM and it'll run till noon. Uh, and also again, um, April sixteenth, which is Tuesday. College for every student, which is uh, CFES, Bryant Pathways is bussing a group of a hundred-plus students in um, junior, rising juniors and seniors campus for an academic expo. That should be exciting for them. In addition uh, to the activities listed in the forward report, the C-Step program is also uh, C-Step program took a group of students overnight uh, to New York City to see Neil DeGrassi, DeGrasse Tyson and the American Museum, uh, Museum of Natural History. Uh, finally, we want to formally congratulate two students who are chosen, sorry, chosen for the chancellor's award uh, for student excellence. And this was very own uh, representative. Congratulations. And also uh, Adam Drew. They will be officially recognized on April eleventh in Albany for their outstanding achievements. So congratulations. Uh, if you have any questions, my lady to my left can always help with anything to do with student affairs. That is my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to diversity, equity, inclusion with John Bar.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, our diversity, equity, inclusion council met on three eight and we reviewed our annual report that the state had asked us for a couple of weeks earlier. So we put it together kind of quickly. And we pulled this nicely. You'll get a copy of it uh, next time. You know, it really, I think helped me get a little bit of better overview of everything that's going on. It was nice. It's a good foundation building. Uh, a part that we want to bring to middle states for this. There's a lot to do with it yet, but uh, yeah, it was a good start. It went pretty well. Haven't heard back from the state state yet about it, so I'm sure that they got quite a few things to read. Uh, it's Women's History Month and then yeah, the AP Club is gonna try and put something together for that. Numerous uh, things going on on campus. Regarding that one, uh, we have some flyers on the screens. We're trying to do a spotlight at first and weekly for Women's History Month and there's been a couple of activities that have went on also. New student activities coordinator's been working out nicely. We have a nice relationship with her on the network. And she's picking up steam as she goes along and gets used to it. Uh, let's see. Oh, the updated my, my credentials. Uh, Steve mentioned those. These were actually put I said, I actually developed these in, I think it was in two thousand eighteen. So what happened is we did updates and we did updates because I've come to classes right now, not available. We did no longer had African-American studies and Russian history and anthropology uh, was there. So we had to make some adjustments to reflect the um, it's just to change them so students can have them. I'll just go over briefly with you. Uh, the first one is designing human rights and to get that credential, you have to have Socian Site one oh one, sociology one twenty, which is sociology of human rights and sociology two hundred, diversity in America. Next one is multiculturalism and diversity. That's sociology of human rights, diversity in America. And then you get a choice out of uh, social site, gender in society or literature and identity. It was really nice to see uh, the English class um, pulled in there because It was really nice to see the English class pulled in here because I mean, there's a lot of nice things that have to do with diversity in that class, so we pulled that one in there. And finally, the last level is Compassionate Communication in Action, that's Sociology of Human Rights. Building Peace, History, Theory, and Practice, which I got to run this semester, which is really nice. And psych, or Ecopsychology and Environmental Justice. So those would be the three, so I'm gonna pass those on to the advisors and try and be more active in making students aware of it, giving the application forms. So that reflects that, I mean, it's, you know, it's, they're out there, but I don't think people realize they're conscious. They, they might know some of the changes that we made with them. Sent out some flyers to the campus, everybody emails. Flabber Ramadan, which is going on right now, also some explanation. My colleague of mine who was at SUNY Westbury now is at SUNY Stony Brook, is a practicing model. And it's really interesting, I got some nice feedback from employees about that. And I also got a couple of students who came up and thanked me for showing it in class. Then they talked about Friday, which is more of a holy day than other days of the week and how they were having difficulty getting to school because of some of the the worship that they were doing. So we were able to accommodate that. The nice part, and we had a nice discussion about what Islam stands for. Her first words out of their mouth, peace and compassion. I said, wow, that's really a message that we'd like to hear more and more people. So I think that that went pretty well too, because we're trying to raise awareness about those types of dates. Oh, Greg and I continue to meet. And we continue to meet every other week with the University officers throughout the state. Oh, one other thing, and I really want to put something together for you someday. I'm on Modern Communication Point three one, because I really have worked out nicely in a class that's going well. We have around ten exercises that people do, your integrating theory into practice and rhythm as well with the school and response that I'm getting from the students is, is good. And you know, it took some time to figure this out, how to get it into a classroom in a meaningful way. But doing it in a online class, it's working out really well. It also sets the parameters for difficult conversations, because we know diversity to be a little heated as of late, within an election year. But so far, everybody's been handling it very well. So I really do appreciate the efforts that the students are doing. I gotta give them a lot of credit for it. You give people an opportunity and you really do see some, some real positive change in people. That's about it for me, any questions?
Dr. Trucky, we'll fill us in on foundation.
Steve mentioned earlier that there's a recent selection of team chair for our Middle States. We do receive notice from recognition that they selected John Conley, Sussex County Community College Jersey. It's often an institution that shows up as a peer of ours on IPED's reporting. So it's, you know, they look for someone who understands where rural, small rural community college is. And Dr. Conley fits that bill, so we will, he will be making a preliminary visit to us in the fall. We expect some communication before that, just to check in where we are and what guidance he can provide. So again, as we continue to churn through the self-study there, but I say visit in the spring of two thousand twenty-five.
Excellent. Trustee Yasnathan, personnel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Tishka starting on February twenty-sixth as a new computer service coordinator. Nathan is a alumni of FMCC and has been actively enlisted in US Marine Corps for nearly twenty years. During this time, he settled upon positions, aviation electrical systems technician, mobilization operations support, aviation maintenance office, and DCO IBM cyber executive officer. So welcome, Nathan. Vacancies and searches, we have LPP counselor, full-time, grant-funded, final stages. Apprenticeship and career planning specialist, full-time, grant-funded, final stages. Fall twenty twenty-four electrical technology facility, full-time, search and progress. Academic advisor and grant pathway specialist, search and progress. Principal clerk, student development center, part-time, search and progress. And that concludes my report, if there's any questions. Thank you.
Trustee Wilson and the Policy Committee, what do you have for me tonight?
Madam Secretary, Madam Secretary, Madam Chair. I am pleased to announce that I have nothing to report tonight.
Is there business to come before the board tonight? I would actually like to ask, I would like to make a motion that the board go into what I anticipate would be a rather brief executive session, after which no action will be taken. The purpose of the executive session relates to a contract or the potential to enter into a contract for for property related to the college. Any discussions? All in favor, going to executive session? Opposed?